All right, as people come in, the next item on the agenda is to just ask the planning board members to introduce themselves. We do have a quorum. A quorum is four members, so we are able to take action and vote in tonight's meeting. Begin with Christine.
Yeah, Christine Donovan Hall from Oars Island.
Howard Levitan, Oars Island.
Amy Highbow Harpswell.
Dan Holbeck, Oars Island.
Lori Rice, Great Island.
Margaret McIntyre, the Harpswell Town Planner.
I just wanted to say a few words before we start our formal meeting. This is Howard's last meeting with the planning board, and I just, without embarrassing him, want to thank him for his service to the town. He's been an invaluable member of this board. Having Howard on the board has been like having our own board attorney. He keeps us on track. He digs way deeper than he needs to as a planning board member. His comments are always worthwhile. He saves us time and effort, and I want to thank him for his service.
Thank you, Madam Chairman. Appreciate it. It's been my privilege to work with you all.
All right, the first application is 250505-2020 LLC, the owner of the Harpswell Corner Market. This is an application that's coming under the type of old business since we looked at it before. This application is coming up for a site plan amendment, a site plan approval. It was tabled at our last meeting so that the applicant could provide more accurate, up-to-date information for the board. When we get a site plan, it is really important that that site plan be something that carries us into the future. So when we get a site plan, it needs to have accurate information that's readable, that we can go back to in, at a later date, or, and really make sure, A, that the applicant has submitted all that there's, the information they're supposed to submit, and if there's an amendment to that application, we can go back and have an accurate record of what was originally approved. Too often, we find that we don't have that information, because in the past, some things that needed site plan review did not get it, and so we're, in a sense, flying blind. When they come back and they want to amend a site plan, we sometimes don't have all the information in our records, so we have trouble comparing information. So when you hear us really being what might be persnickety about site plan information, that's the reason why, and it's really for the applicant and the town. So, we asked the applicant to update the information, make sure that it was correct. Mr. Levitan noted that there was no documentation of an original site plan approval. There were only amendments to an incomplete record. So, there also was no site plan for the reported property in the Cumberland County Registry of Deans. So that kind of sets us back right from the beginning, and we're playing catch-up here. So at that meeting, we asked for additional information. We asked for documentation of imperious lot coverage. We asked for the proposed location of picnic tables, and an accurate scaled site plan that showed all the parking spaces. We also asked for the location and dimensions of the structures, the distance between the house and the retail space, and the location of the dumpster. We have the minutes in front of us in which that discussion took place, and we can refer to those if we need to. We also noted the following. We noted that the business, the principal use of it is for a retail business, which makes a difference, and as such, the standards for Section 15.17.1, which are parking standards, that it meets those parking requirements, because it gives us 10 parking spaces, and that meets those standards. That was something we decided at the last minute, and that was, that was something that we had to move through in order to bring the plan to where it is today. We also noted that there would be no table service provided for the picnic tables, and that the picnic tables would be available for anyone to use, even if they're not buying something from the business. So with that in mind, we can begin our formal review. And if the board is all right, I'd like to begin with just going right into conformance with submission requirements. Would that be all right with the board?
Do you want to elevate Christine, so she can vote?
Oh, one, two, three, four, yes, Christine.
Okay.
Absolutely, thank you.
Okay.
Yep. All right, let's hear from, normally what we do is reintroduce the, the application. Then I ask the planner if she has anything that she'd like to add.
Which I don't.
Okay, which she doesn't. I know that there will be questions that, that I hope she will be able to answer as we move along. Then we hear from the applicant, and the public is always welcome to also make a comment. Just come to the podium, state your name, so that everybody in TV land knows who you are, and we'll go with that. All right, sir.
Yeah, I'm Joe Chivron. I, running the corner market. I guess we kind of went over everything. Do we want to re-go, or, re-injure, yeah, we just would like to have two picnic tables, so people who buy food can sit down and enjoy it. Pretty straightforward.
Okay. All right, what we will do now is we're going to go through the submission requirements. And as we do that, we'll probably have some discussion, and you're welcome to return to the podium to answer questions at that time. Okay, thank you. All right, so the first item is conformance with submission requirements, and the planner reviewed the application for completeness, and she suggested eight waivers. Eight waivers. Those are eight things that don't need to be provided in the submission, and I will move that the planning board finds that the application for 2020 LLC for an amendment to the, an approved site plan meets the submission requirements of Section 14 of the Site Plan Review Ordinance, subject to granting the following waivers. Those waivers are 14.2.7, intersecting roads, 14.2.9, surface water drainage, 14.2.10, existing signs, 14.2.11, hydrants, fire protection, 14.3.2, surface drainage, 14.3.9 signage, 14.3.12 traffic, and 14.3.13. I move that we waive those requirements. Now, one more for a second.
Second.
Any discussion?
I just had a question for the planner. In the, on the bottom of the first page of the findings, okay, now I understand that. All right, so it's not approb, we're not overruling a site plan approval or disapproval?
Right.
Okay, that's fine.
No, the former planner just made it very clear, wanted it to be really clear.
That if you wanted it, yeah, to come back.
That you have to come back. Any more discussion, anyone from the public? All right, I'll take a vote. All those in favor? All right, so we have waived those submission requirements. Now we have conformance with site plan review standards. So, since the proposed expanded use of the building doesn't include any development on the property, some of the site plan review standards in Section 15 are not applicable to the application. I know this sounds confusing, but we have to go through this in order to meet legal requirements, because the planning board is a quasi-legal board, so bear with us as we go. Application of 2020 LLC meets the following approval standards of Section 15 of the Site Plan Review Ordinance. Based on the finding that the standards were met in the 2011 Site Plan Amendment, and no changes are proposed. Those changes are, are those, those requirements, those standards are 15.1 dimensional, 15.2 utilization of the site, 15.3 adequacy of road systems, 15.4 access into the site, 15.5 access and egress, 15.8 pedestrian circulation, 15.9 stormwater management, 15.10 erosion control, 15.11 water supply and groundwater protection, 15.13 utilities and essential services, 15.14 natural features and buffering, 15.15 lighting, 15.16 water quality protection, 15.17 hazardous, special, and radioactive materials. Do we view that? 15.18 solid, special, and hazardous waste disposal, 15.19 historic and archaeological resources, and 15.20 flood plain management. I've made a motion. Is there a second? Can you second that?
I think, second, I'd like to, I think you should add one more.
Okay.
To it. I think you should add 1522, which is Mitchell Field.
Oh, thank you.
Because it makes no sense to go on for pages and then say it's not applicable, because it's not in Mitchell Field.
Oh, that is, that's 15.22.
I'll tell you why it's in there, because it wasn't addressed in the 2011 Site Plan Standard.
Oh, it was not?
It was not, because it didn't exist in that.
All right.
In that ordinance.
Thank you.
That's the only reason why it's in there.
That's a great suggestion.
All right, well, you can do it either way, but in the future, we wouldn't, it's probably not a good idea to have.
That's a great suggestion.
Mitchell Field's pages in there.
Excellent. Okay, it's been moved and seconded. Any discussion on the motion to find that the, that those standards are not applicable to the application? Discussion? See no discussion? All those in favor? All right. Now we're going to look at standards that are applicable to the application. I'm going to make a motion. That motion will be seconded, probably, and then we will have a discussion. Just because the motion is made, doesn't mean that the, that there aren't any changes, or there won't be any recommendations or further discussion about some of the things that are in the, the standards that are applicable. So, and I'm sure I didn't make much sense when I said that, but you'll get it as we go along. So I'm going to move that the planning board finds that the application of 2020 LLC meets the following approval standards of Section 15 of the Site Plan Review Ordinance, based on the following findings that are incorporated into this motion by reference. Is there a second?
Second.
All right, any discussion? Okay, let's see. Now we're going to go through the standards. It has been moved and seconded, and now we'll go through the standards. The first is internal vehicular circulation. Does anybody have any comments about internal vehicular circulation the planner found that the standards had been met? Okay, any discussion? 15.71, parking spaces required. Any discussion about parking spaces required?
I think that's the basic question here, is what category it falls in, because the addition of seats either inside or outside sort of flops into either the category of retail and commercial sales, or eating and drinking amusement or recreation establishment. Each have two different standards, one for restaurants being one per three seats and one per employee, so it depends on how many additional seats you add, and the other being based on the square footage of the building itself, which in this case is 1,818 square feet, which would require 10 parking spaces. There are 10 parking spaces striped, and there are two additional spaces, one beside, between the house and the building, and the other along a back entrance off of Mountain Road, making 12 in total, that show up on the plan that we have now received, and we are told in the plan that they are, they meet the dimensional requirements for, for that. So we have several choices which are outlined in the findings about whether or not the standard is met, depending on how you characterize the building, the business. We could adopt the proposition that it is, is it similar to the, the coffee shop on Route 123 that the staff review committee suggested was more of a restaurant than a commercial operation, and allowed there to be three tables outside and several seats inside? Or was it limited to the, or would it be limited to the 10, to the 10 spaces, or a combination of the other? In other words, the, our ordinance allows incremental look at different uses. So if, if there were an eating, drinking, and use, it would be an additional increment to the concept, which in this case, if you had, so for example, if you had two tables of six, you would need, that would be, two tables of six is 12, that would be four additional parking spaces, if you deemed it incremental and an eating and drinking establishment. My thought is that the principal business of the corner market is and has always been retail sales, and that we ought to look at that, and that this, having a few picnic tables, and I, by a few, we'll get to the number later, it doesn't change the nature of the business, because they were not doing, they're not going to be doing table service, and some people may sit there because they're tired, some people may sit there and eat what they bought in the store, and other people may bring their own. And I think it's just a nice gathering place for the town of Harpswell, and it doesn't really impact the business, and that we should look at this as if they are, they're predominantly a retail and commercial operation, and that they need 10 spaces. So that's how I look at the parking space requirement. The only issue that I see, if you, if you follow along that argument, is that the two spaces that are present, in addition to the 10 that are required, really are, go, go with the house. They're, they're, they meet the residential requirement for the house, and if those spaces are to be considered in any capacity, we would have to basically say that that's fine as long as the house isn't used, in and of itself, during the period of time that the business is operating, because it's a seasonal business, am I correct? Right, so it can't be used for an office. If, if the house, for example, were used for offices, then we'd have to look at the office requirement for the, for that use in addition to, and maybe that would be okay. And if it were used as a residence, there is a residential parking requirement, that we would have to count on that. But since they already have 10 for this particular use, and the house is at present not being used, I, I think we're okay on the parking spaces. So that's how I analyze it, and hope you agree with that.
Yeah, that's why I asked, if you look at page six of the minutes that Margaret gave us, we have a big discussion about this at the last meeting, and the, the second paragraph up from the bottom says, "The determination that the principal use will remain in retail business pertains to the parking requirements. The board discussed requiring parking for just retail, both a retail establishment and eating establishment, or just an eating establishment. Christine Donovan Hall noted that by using the retail standards, the parking on the lot is adequate for the current use." And while it doesn't say it in there, and we didn't necessarily take a vote, it may, my understanding was that that was what we agreed to.
Yes.
And so I think having this in the minutes, and I don't know if we need to have a note on the plan. What do you think, Howard, that says?
Well, I think that we, we also went further and said that we want to look at this as a, for one, for the first season.
Thank you.
That's what I was going to bring up.
And the planner has added a provision in the conditions.
Those are, in the, those are the recommendations for final approval that are in.
Correct, and that would, that would bring the issue back to the, you said the staff review committee, and that.
Yeah.
And I think that that's.
Oh, it was just a suggestion.
Yeah, well, I don't have a problem with that suggestion, because I think staff review committee does look at what, what we would call minor amendments.
It could be either or.
Well, I, I was going to suggest that we added to the language something to the effect that if, if the staff review committee determined that it affected a standard, you got to kick it back to the board. And have them look at it.
All right, so we'll keep that in mind.
Affected a, a approval standard.
Okay, so we'll keep that in mind as we move forward in our review.
I think they would anyway, but.
Okay, so I'm going to rely on you to.
I'll get you, when we get there.
Okay, okay. All right, we are now on 15.7.2 Layout and Design. I just want to initiate a little bit of discussion around this issue. Item three says parking stalls and aisle layout must conform to the following standards. And when you have a 90-degree parking angle, your stall width has to be 8 feet 6 inches, the depth has to be 18 feet 6 inches, and the aisle width, because this is a two-way in and out, will have to be 24 feet. On the site plan, we have a note that says the entrance is 40 feet wide, but we don't have any detail about the width or depth of the parking spaces. Nine-foot-wide parking spaces. Do we have anything on the depth or the width of the entire? By my calculation, the width of, from one end to the other, of the asphalt surface would have to be 61 point, 61 feet 2 inches. And I'm not saying that it's not, but I think this is the kind of thing that needs to be on the plan, so that if we have questions about it when we go back, we know that we've met these standards.
I don't know what the length of the, the parking space was, but I know that when we went to the walk-through, Tim and I parked there, and we were in the, I was in completely. I have a big SUV, and I was in.
The, the depth of the bed is 20 feet long, so.
No, we were talking about a parking space.
Right, right, but the, the bed is as long as the parking spaces.
Yeah, I, I was pretty sure that there wasn't a length for it, but could it be put on the peninsula?
But there's no, there's no changes proposed. It's an existing commercial parking spot, parking lot, and if it's functioning.
It's up to the board.
Yeah, and when, and when we discussed it at the last meeting, the only thing that we asked you to do was to come back and to show us the, the number of parking spaces and the width of all of those. And that you provided, yeah.
Okay, so, my, my sense is that we either need, we need to make a clarifying statement about that, and it should be in the minutes, because we are not conforming to the layout. We don't know that we're conforming to the layout and design, and we're not waiving anything, but it's there. It's there in the, in the standards, it's there in the conformance with submission requirements. So I'm bringing it up, and it's up to the board, whether you want to do anything with it or not.
To me, it's like, we asked him to clarify the parking, which has been done. The parking is well laid out. As you drive by, you can see it. Cars are lining up nicely and that. I haven't noticed when I go by it, any issues. He's looking at one to two picnic tables, no inside eating. So the parking lot's existing, he's met what we asked there. If we do a one-year review and like that, to see how those picnic tables change or don't change anything, I think that's being overall as fair as we can be without being too restrictive.
Okay, that's my sense.
Yeah, I also think that whether or not it was in the site plan amendment in 2011 or not, if the buildings don't change and the use doesn't change significantly, then it's sort of, it's sort of a grandfathering thing. I mean, you know, we approved it at one point. It's run and operated for so long, I, I don't know how we can, unless the use changes, go back and look at stuff that is on the ground now.
Yeah.
And now it's shredded. It was really bad when it wasn't shredded. Because people don't park right.
Yeah, that's fine.
I mean, just my own thought.
Yeah, okay, I hear, I hear the board, I wanted to raise it. I thought it might be a good idea to go and measure it and put it on a final site plan, but it's up to the board. That way we'd have the information there, we'd know what we're dealing with in the future, but it's up to the board. And I'm hearing that it's not a concern. Okay?
Yeah.
15.12 subsurface waste disposal. If there's any questions, just raise your hand, I'll just go through these. 15.21, technical and financial capacity, 15.22, additional standards for Mitchell Field Business District, 15.2, oh, just go through those.
That's all part of 15 through two.
I did have one other question, if I could ask this. I did have one other question, if I could ask this. The trees are not shown on the site plan. Do you, and I.
I do the trunk of one of the trees, but I didn't do the two pine trees.
Okay, so just want to ask you for clarification. Are you going to leave the trees there? The picnic tables will go under the trees? Or are you going to?
The, the large, whatever kind of tree it is, the large tree don't kind of go under that, sort of next to each other over here.
So you're not planning on taking any of the trees down at this time?
No.
Okay, just want to clarify that. Okay, so a motion has been made.
We have to open it up to the public.
Yes, yes. I want to get myself, thank you, Dan. All right, a motion has been made. Finding that the application meets the approval standards of section fifteen. Is there any input from the public at this time? Seeing none, I'll ask the board if there's any further discussion from the board. Motion has been made in second. All those in favor? All right, good. Last thing that we do in the process is do conclusions of law. Dan, do you want to do this finally?
Uh, I'm not sure that I have the most recent one.
All right, let's look at these and Howard, pay, pay attention to what your issues were. So in light of these findings of fact and considerations and the record dated, this date dated.
June eighteen.
Is that right? Dated June twelfth, twenty twenty-five. Board finds that the applicant, twenty twenty LLC, has met the standards of the Town of Harpswell Site Plan Review Ordinance. The planning board for the addition of seating to the property at five oh nine Harpswell. As a bakery, specialty grocery store.
This is where we have to take a decision. And I would suggest none.
Not even proposed, I don't believe.
Yes, three seats inside.
We need a, a, like a standing coffee table.
That's what I, okay.
I think there's more likelihood of it being determined to be a eating establishment.
Okay.
That's just my suggestion. Two tables of, of.
Two picnic tables outside.
Six, it's twelve spaces. There's three on its side and one of those picnic tables.
All along, we've been discussing this application as though it was going to have that standing space inside.
Well, standing is not seating, though.
Pardon me?
I would say standing is not the same thing as seating.
Well, if someone, if they serve them, whether they're standing or seating, then it's a different story. In other words, they're, they're going to go get their coffee somewhere and bring it back and stand up because there's a bench there? I, I think it's a slippery slope. And I'd rather have, have us look at this whole thing. The reason for the parking standards is because people come and they leave. They don't stay in a retail environment. That's why the parking standard is, is, is what it is. If, if we had, if people come and they stay, there isn't room for more people to come and visit. And it goes into the problem of there being parking along the road, which is prohibited, or on the other side of the road, which would be really crazy. That's what's happened from what we understand at the coffee shop. So during peak times. So I think we have to be a little cautious and take baby steps here. Baby step would be, let's see what happens this summer. Let the staff review committee look at it, or the planning board, and a year from now, and see if we have a traffic problem. What we wanted to do was, was not defeat this whole thing because it would be nice to have gathering spaces. But we have to be careful that we don't screw up the, this is too close to that intersection to be causing more problems than we need, my thought.
Yeah, if I can just kind of clarify a little bit with what Howard's saying. The idea of having a seating inside is problematic. If you have a couple of high-top tables for people to set things down while they're shopping and all that, I don't have a problem with that, especially since there isn't any serving. So, you know, the idea of having something where people, as they're shopping, can put something down, that's, you know, that's just making the, making the shopping experience a little easier. But since there's no discussion about down inside and having somebody come and wait on you, it seems to me to be the determining factor.
Okay.
I would agree with that.
I would agree with that, too.
So we would just say, two tables outside, no seating in?
And each table seats six people. With. No inside seating for customers with the following standard conditions of approval. You got that, Margaret? This, this approval is not final until such time as final plans showing all conditions of approval and any waivers granted have been signed by the chair of the planning board. This approval is based on the approved plans and on all submissions and information provided by the applicant at final approval, whether referenced in any findings or conditions of approval. This approval is dependent upon and limited to the proposal and plans contained in the application and supporting documents submitted and affirmed to by the applicant. Any variation from the plan, proposals and supporting documents, except the minimus changes as determined by the town planner that do not affect approval standards, is subject to review and approval of the planning board prior to implementation. The applicant shall obtain all necessary state and federal approvals before the applicant commences any land use activity pursuant to this site plan approval and shall comply with the requirements of these, of those permits and approvals. Four, all work shall be completed in accordance with best management practices for soil erosion and sedimentation control. And five, this approval is valid for the twenty twenty-five season. Prior to opening in twenty twenty-six, the applicant will return to the staff review committee to discuss the adequacy of parking. To the staff, how would you like to word that?
I, I just leave it the way it is.
Unless there are substantive changes or, or conditional changes or sta- uh, changes in standards.
No, oh, at the end, I would add. So I have two, two changes to this paragraph. First, we ought to define what the twenty twenty-five season is, so we don't have a problem there. And so I would say commencing with, commencing on June eighteen, twenty twenty-five and ending on October thirty-one, twenty twenty-five, just to define what the season is. And then at the end, I would say, or, instead of the period, or send, send this issue back to the planning board for a decision if it determines, it being the staff review committee, that any of the approval standards have not been met. In that way. That's similar to what we do in, in situations, for example, where code, where we, we're me into codes. If, if there's a.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Approval standard issue, then codes kicks it back to us.
Would you read that again for everybody?
Sure. Or send.
No, no, this approval is valid.
Okay, this approval is valid for the twenty twenty-five season, comma, commencing June eighteen, twenty twenty-five and ending October thirty-one, twenty five, twenty, twenty twenty-five, comma. Return, uh, prior to the opening in twenty twenty-six, the applicant will return to the staff review committee to discuss the adequacy of the parking. At that time, the staff review committee can decide to renew the approval for seating for a time period to be determined, modify the approval for seating, or deny a renewal of this approval for seating, or send the issue back to the planning board for a decision if it determines that any of the approval standards have not been met.
I just have one question to see. Are you planning on the season ending by October thirty-first?
Yeah.
Okay. I didn't want you to get into trouble there.
It's what we use for, uh, mountain road.
Right.
Maker's place.
Yeah.
Okay.
All right. There's been a motion made. Keeping up with myself. Motion made. Is there a second to the motion?
I'll say.
Any more discussion? Okay, all those in favor?
Good.
Some clarification on this, maybe, was that without seats?
No seats.
We approved it.
On the inside, no seats.
No seats on your standing, almost.
Much success to you.
Yeah, good luck.
So, Joe, I'll get a notice of decision ready. Amy will sign it and then you will record it at the registry of deeds within forty-five days. Yeah, I'll let you know.
Thanks.
All right. Okay, good.
Okay, Mr. Lobster. Next.
All right, our next item is a new business, twenty-five oh six, oh three. Excuse me, I just came back. This is listed as a new application and it really is, but it's also an old one. Looked at this a couple of years ago. So. What I will do in usual fashion is just do a quick overview. Ask the planner if she would like to update anything for us and then ask the applicant to make their presentation and we'll take it from there. So just really quickly, we approved this site plan in twenty twenty-three. And it replaced a non-conforming structure with another non-conforming set of structures, but they were more conforming than the earlier conditions on the, on the site. So this property is owned by JD LLC. It's on map forty-five, lot sixty-nine, at five, six oh seven Lobster Lane. Lobster Lane is off the south end of Pinkham Point Road, which is a town-owned road. And this, the owner recently acquired additional land from the abutting property. Was added to the Lobster Lane property, which is why we're here now. So the acreage of the lot now is about forty-two thousand one hundred and sixteen square feet or just about one acre, which is a little over half an acre from where we were before. The land that was added essentially connects the existing property with Pinkham Point Road. And the two hundred feet, existing feet of water frontage is unchanged and the lot now has about a hundred and twenty-two feet of frontage on Pinkham Point Road. So to add to the mix, in June of twenty twenty-four, Harpswell adopted revised FEMA flood insurance rate maps and the flood zone on the property is now in what is called the velocity zone, which imposes more strict regulations on structures in that zone. Has an elevation of thirteen feet. The additional land that's been added in is completely out of the flood zone. And let's see, the applicant proposes to move the septic system and fuel storage to the west of the buildings, getting them out of the flood zone and increase parking from seven spaces to fourteen. So with that.
That's a pretty good summary, yeah.
I just read off.
I put this plan up because it's one you haven't seen.
Okay.
And this is a updated survey plan, so this still shows the existing conditions prior to the current construction.
Would you state your name?
I'm sorry. Yeah, I'm Will Gartley, a civil engineer with Gartley and Dorsky, representing JD LLC. And so this is all still showing what was previously existing. The parcel used to be right here and there were two other owners of this parcel and this parcel. And so there were some lamp swaps done in order to reconfigure and it actually ended up being a better situation for everybody because these little thin strips weren't all that useful at the locations. So the big advantage to JD LLC is the things that you just listed. We were able to add parking, which was definitely a concern the first time we were here. Move the septic system, which the existing septic system was down under this parking lot and it was going to remain down there. It wasn't going to be on the pavement anymore, but it was still going to be down here. Now that's up here. And we were able to make the entrance, which the fire chief had made a comment about originally, a lot more gentle and not steep. There was a real quick climb because of ledge. And then we provided more space just for utilities, for, you know, access. And then we were able to move, move the fuel tanks, which were going to be down here where they were originally on the new property. So all of those things got moved out of the flood plain and further from the water and just made the, you know, the tightness of the, of the property much better or less. And you're still, it's still a busy site. There's a lot going on. But the buildings haven't changed. It's really just the parking and utilities that we were able to move around.
All right, thank you. More have any, any questions? We, we have some preliminary stuff that we have to get through.
Did you have additional plans for us since the, since the email correspondence with the planner?
I brought plans to the site walk.
Yeah.
That I handed out and, but I, nothing since then.
Nothing since then, okay.
Howard, you want to say?
And that.
I just wanted to see if it changed, did, did it change anything in your?
I didn't get them. I didn't get the ones from the site walk.
You might want to take a look at it.
Do you want to take, did you want to see it?
I've got, I've got an extra one here, too, if somebody would like it.
What was the date of that plan?
It, the original date on the plan was six, six, twenty-five and in the revision block.
The one I have is.
Six, six, twenty-five.
All right. Margaret has suggested that before we move on, we discuss whether or not we want a peer review of this project because it is fairly complicated. We had a peer review on the first project, which I think was very helpful. And the site plan review ordinance does allow the planning board to assess the applicant's peer review fee. By peer review, that means there is a fairly complicated engineering drawings. They have a lot of information on them. The planning staff and the code staff are sometimes pushed to the limit in terms of really looking at these and reviewing them. So we hire an outside engineer to actually come in, paid for by the applicant, to work on behalf of the town to review the applicant's. the town, to review the applicant's drawings, to make sure that the applicant's drawings actually meet all the criteria that they're supposed to meet, and that's called a peer review. So, it's a, um, it's another set of eyes by another engineer on the applicant's drawings. Um, so the, the fee can be used only for retaining outside assistance to help. The amount of the fee is established by the board, and if the initial deposit isn't adequate to cover the cost, the board can require the applicant to make an additional amount, and then any unused fees are returned to the applicant. Um, so as I said, the board utilized the peer review model in two thousand and twenty-three, and before moving on, um, I just want to make the board aware that Margaret did, um, get in touch with Gore Palmer, and you have a copy of that. It's, uh, it's on Outlook, and it's, uh, Lobster Lane questions. It's from William Gartley. It should be in your package. And do you have it? Does everybody have it? Okay. Margaret, do you want, do you wanna update us on this, this information?
Yeah, I just wanted you to have a quote, in case that was something that you felt was necessary, but, um, Will Haskell from Gore Palmer, who's our town consulting and dinner firm, um, says that he, he said, based on an initial quick review, it appears that the application is complete and remains in compliance with the ordinance. I would say our review would range between a thousand, a thousand and fifteen hundred.
A thousand, between a thousand and fifteen hundred.
So, it's up to you whether or not you feel like that's necessary.
What I'd really like for you to do is go through his memo to you and, and discuss, or just point out to us the places where he had questions.
Who?
No, your questions. Those were Margaret's questions.
Oh, okay, yes, your questions.
My questions...
Some of your questions were, um...
The one...
Oh, sorry, go ahead.
No, that, you're looking at a different email. Sorry. There's two different emails. One from Will Haskell, our town consulting engineer, about whether or not we need a peer review, and there's another email from Will Gartley about some follow-up questions I had about the application.
Okay.
Okay, I guess I don't have that response. You have a response from Will Gartley?
I have the William Gartley response.
Okay.
Oh, this one was included with the draft motions for you guys, but, um, here, pass down.
That's...
That's one from the, and our town consulting engineer.
No, I meant, I meant his response to your email.
Oh, yeah, you have it.
Okay, okay, so I'll just read this. This is dated May thirtieth. Well, that's interesting, because this is dated, the William Gartley one is six, six, twenty-five. This is dated May thirtieth, two thousand and twenty-five. So, I don't understand, um, all right, okay, all right.
Let me have a shot at this.
Um, yeah, I'll just read this before you...
Okay.
You can have it, you can take it away, but...
No.
It just says, based on initial quick review, it appears that the application is complete and remains in compliance with the ordinance, and again, if we wanted to do a peer review, it would be a thousand to fifteen hundred dollars.
Right.
Take it away.
Okay, I, I was looking at the email from, uh, Margaret, uh, you, and you responded, but I don't have that response, and it raises several questions, first being, there are multiple new concrete slabs that encroach the northerly and southerly property boundaries. The second was an additional septic tank, and it doesn't, the HH, the application doesn't... I don't have the, his response.
They're in there, it's just he responded in red, and it got printed in black and white. So, the...
At the end of each one of her questions, I responded.
The font's a bit different, you have to look carefully.
Okay, so these are your responses in red?
Howard, if it was printed, it's, it's on the next page, look. If it was printed in color, this is what you would see.
Would you like to look at mine?
Oh, yeah, thank you.
Please, take a look at mine.
Sorry.
So, the red is...
It's subtle, but you can tell.
I see. But, that's what I do. All right, so you have now responded to tho, all those questions, and is the planner satisfied with the responses?
Yes and no. The septic system, because they've gained this additional land, and so it's on what previously was a different lot. So, I pulled that septic design, and that needed a state approval. The current one doesn't need a state approval, so I was just kinda asking, what's the difference? But I talked to Tim Clark, the code officer, today, and he's satisfied with the septic design, and he feels like he could approve it, so I think that that's a non-issue.
Okay.
Yeah, we reviewed that today. Um, he updated the septic plan to show an additional employee, um, to kind of account for somebody being at the oyster building, so that's included here, and, um, he updated the hat to the highest astronomical tide.
Yeah.
And then the last question is about the concrete pads and the setbacks.
Okay.
And how about the, um, the walkway for the oyster facility?
I think that is...
Oyster building.
Yeah, it's just something that, it's non-conforming, and well, they have, you know, this thirty percent expansion, because although the oyster building's functionally water-dependent, it doesn't need to meet the, the water setbacks, it still has to meet the sideline setbacks, and so what they're doing is expanding in the, in the side setbacks, so it has to meet this thirty percent expansion, which is an issue that's not gonna come up for the planning office, but as soon as it gets to the code office, then it would be the, the issue would come up there. What do I say?
All right, so let's get back to the concrete pads, if we can, 'cause I think that's something that I had concern about, because technically, I believe that the pad is a structure.
By definition, yes.
By definition.
Mm-hmm.
And if it, if the structure is closer to, if it doesn't, if it increases the nonconformity, it's not allowed.
Correct.
But it doesn't, it doesn't increase the nonconformity.
Well, it's...
All the slabs are further away from the property line than the original building, on all sides.
All right, is that the case?
I would call it a new non-conforming structure, and say that I don't, I think it's against the ordinance.
Well, that's, then I think we need an opinion from our engineer to that effect before we can vote on it.
'Cause what, they had a non-conforming structure existed, they tore it down and rebuilt it, they made it more conforming.
Right.
But now what they're doing is adding a new non-conforming structure. It's not the replacement of the original one, and it's not an expansion, it's a brand-new one.
Well, it's...
Is there a plan that overlays the old building with those concrete pads?
Yeah.
It's, it's on there subtly.
Yeah, subtly?
Did I put it up to you?
Yeah.
This dash line, briefly.
Yeah.
Over here, and we're talking about these, the utilities, it's the, like, the air handling system that's attached to the building, it's the compressors, it's the DC, and it's a...
These, these right here are what?
Those are, um, compressors.
Okay.
Okay, but this building was noncon, this is, the red dotted line is the...
That's the twenty-foot setback?
Right, so...
And the original footprint was here?
Uh-huh.
It's on the property line.
Oh, I see.
So, it's all within the original footprint?
Except for this.
No, that's even within the original building footprint. There's the original building right here.
Looks like the dotted line goes right through that condenser.
It does, but we don't have an issue going in that direction. Oh, I see what you're saying.
It did.
We're not closer.
We're not closer.
We're not closer.
Okay.
In any place, even over here, the ramp on the door.
That would be...
And that's a way, so when everything's further away, I would, the piece of, uh, not, a part of this building.
I, I then would think we need peer review, just to confirm all that, that it's okay.
And if they're doing...
I'm sorry.
My question about...
We, we need to have our engineer tell us that, that this is in com, in compliance with the nonconforming section of our statute, because those are structures, whether they're new structures or, they are new structures, and whether they're less conforming or more conforming is what I would like to know, from our engineer.
I'm not sure I agree.
It's okay.
Because the, there was a structure there, there was a building there.
Right.
What is being proposed now is way less nonconforming. There's just a little bit of structure that's where the old structure used to be, and it's clearly servicing that building, and so I, I think it's a moot point.
Okay, yeah, I agree with Amy on that.
I do, too. I actually missed one, 'cause it's a lot, it's still nonconforming, but it's less nonconforming than the original was.
It's a new nonconforming structure, which is not permissible by the ordinance, in my opinion.
I, I tend to agree with it.
But how, how...
Because there, there was a nonconforming structure, it was made more conforming, and now they are putting in new nonconforming structures, which is a standalone, you have to think...
Which weren't in the plan.
You have, it's complicated, and you have to think of it as its own thing. So, there's a brand-new structure going in the setback, all the other things.
Because it wasn't there in the first, um...
That's correct.
Is that the problem, is because it wasn't there in the first plan that was approved?
If it was there in the first plan, we would be having the same discussion. It was not in the first plan, but it's still a new nonconforming condition.
I know, I guess that, but I, I, I...
It is a new structure.
Yeah, you step up to the microphone.
This guy, he has a question first.
Yeah.
He, he said he had a question about this.
Can I keep that?
Can I keep that?
Yeah, yeah.
Oh, no, my, uh, my daughter, it's faces me, went to...
He said he had a question about the fee.
No, he didn't.
About the fee?
Yeah, and also... They, they made it more conforming, but now they wanna do new things that are nonconforming.
We're having a sidebar discussion here. Did you have a question for us?
Yeah, excuse me, I did, and I'm, two things I wanted to point out is, one, I don't think it's another engineer's job in a peer review to interpret the ordinance, I actually think it's yours, um, with all respect, and then I think if you look at the expansion section, and I would argue that these aren't new structures any, any more than the building is a new structure, right? Everything we're building here is new, and so those utility pads are all connected to this structure, um, with pipes or some sort of structure, so they're, they're part of this principal structure.
But they're standalone, so they're not part of the principal structure by definition.
They're connected to it, but even, even under the expansion, accessory structures are allowed, as long as they're not more nonconforming.
Which section are you looking at?
Um, both ten, three, in the...
We're looking...
In the regular ord...
Mm-hmm, oh.
Well, they, they, I think they, why I'm, I'm mentioning the land use ordinance is because in the shoreline zoning ordinance, there's very little mention of side yard setback. There is some, but very little, but I think they both apply anyway, and the language is very, very similar. So, ten, three, one, five, in the shoreline zoning, or ten, three, one? And the, you know, a, a nonconforming structure may be added to or expanded, as long as the expansion does not increase the nonconformity of the structure.
What number are you looking at right now?
Ten, three, one, five, in the shoreline zoning ordinance?
Ten, three, one, five is about recording stuff at the registry of deeds.
In the shoreline zoning ordinance?
Yeah.
No, it's nonconforming structures, it's on page...
Page five?
Three, one, five.
Uh, ten, what, what did you say?
Ten, ten, three, one, five is about recording.
Right, it's just after that, when it talks about expansions, on page five.
In the citizens note?
Right.
Mm-hmm. So, those, in order for those sections to apply, that structure would have had to been there in nineteen eighty-nine, and these are new structures that you're talking about.
This applies to the site as it existed before we started this, and they did exist in nineteen eighty-nine.
The concrete pads did not exist in nineteen eighty-nine.
Well, none of what we're proposing to build was existing in nineteen ninety-eighty-nine.
Yeah, the principal structures were there in eighty-nine. So, you did a tear-down and rebuild of a nonconforming structure that existed on the site in nineteen eighty-nine.
Sorry.
Section ten point three point one six foundations says that whenever a new enlarged or replacement foundation is constructed under a nonconforming, well, under a nonconforming structure, the structure and the new foundation must be placed, so the setback requirement is met to the greatest practical extent. Um, I was gonna say, you could say that those are, um, the foundations for the, um, equipment. But, reconstructing, so, tell us a section that you're looking at.
Well, I think both sections, the ten point three and the, and the standard land use ordinance, and the basic land use ordinance, which is on page three.
Well, we're not in the basic.
Well, it, it does apply.
The shoreline zone, zoning act is, is stricter, and it governs in the shoreline zone, we're in the shoreline zone.
Right, they both, they both say basically the same thing.
Okay, so, tell us what, exactly what you're looking at, um, I have it on page five.
Right, I think, I think the, the real question here is, are those separate structures from the, from the principal structure, or, I mean, they're, they're part of the, the new building, they're required for the building, they're, they're the utilities for the structure, and they're all considerably further away from the property line than anything that was there before.
Yep. What do you think, board?
I'm looking for that section.
I agree that having an engineer take a look at this is not really an appropriate piece of the engineer's time. This is a, either a legal question, um, if the planner can't make a determination that she does, and that the board can't, um, I think it's more of a legal question or a board question, but whatever we do, we need to be really clear why we're doing it.
I'm reading the citizens note, and the nonconforming structure, and it doesn't simply meet any of these three definitions that appears.
Read it for us, please.
The purpose of this ordinance, an increase to the nonconformity of the structure shall mean on any expansion toward body, water bodies, stream, tributary stream, coastal wetland, freshwater, wetland, or property line that decreases the choice of existing nonconforming setback, this is from the water body, stream, tributary stream, coastal wetland, freshwater, wetland, or property line, or an expansion that would cause the structure to exceed an impermeable surface coverage requirement under section fifteen point two one four, or any expansion that would cause the structure to exceed the height limits of section fifteen point two one two. These are pads, so there's no height, they're not going toward the water, and will already well within the impermeable surface percentage.
Yeah. What do you think, Dan?
I, I don't have a problem, you know, especially considering what we have approved of a significant, um, a significant reduction in the nonconformity. So, what we're, and if we can consider this to be a continuation, which really is of what we did, um, I don't have a problem with it.
I don't have an opinion on this, I don't have enough...
You don't have any?
Yeah, yeah, experience with this particular thing, so I don't have...
Thank you.
First of all, I don't think ten point three point one applies, because that's, that's a nonconforming structure. What does apply is ten point three point two, which is the tear-down section, and if it had come to us in the first plan, I would have agreed with Amy and Dan that, um, we would get into greatest practical extent and all that kind of stuff, but you still have to, you can't be closer to the setback line. But this isn't what it is. This is, we approved the plan in twenty-twenty-three. And this is an amendment to that plan. And the amendment has, is a new structure. It is not the, the structure that we approved. And so I, I just don't think it, I think Margaret's right, that it has to be within the setback area. Or, or it doesn't work. Because we would then, we've already approved that building pad, the building location. And now we are being asked to approve changes, which are new structures. A structure is a structure. It doesn't, I mean, we've said that in numerous cases, including tents that are structures. So, I mean, you can't say it's not a structure.
Okay, well, Mike, then let's see if we can clarify this a little bit more. The structure that this is attached to the utilities are for, that was approved at the last, in twenty-twenty-three.
Correct.
What is the reason for adding the new pad?
Further design from the mechanical engineers.
And it can't be put in, away, in, to conform. It's a non-conforming structure.
Well, I mean, no, and I would, and my argument for that least, my case for what you said would be that if we re-looked at moving it back to the greatest practical extent with these in consideration, I still think we meet that requirement because there's, there's nowhere to go. We're up against setbacks on this side. This building got moved away from this sideline. This building got moved far away from this sideline. We moved up out of the flood plain. We moved further from the water. I still think we meet the requirement. So regardless of what was approved before, we're coming back showing that we need these utilities and that we're still keeping them further from the property line than the original building.
Good question. As you were pretty far along in the designs, this is a mechanical and this wasn't part of the original. This would have been part of the original lines if they were doing mechanical.
They just hadn't, hadn't gotten that far down the road. We didn't realize what they were gonna need for equipment.
Did they change some of their equipment designs or requirements?
No, I, I, James Beasley, architect on the project with Kevin Brown Architecture. We had not enlisted the services of a mechanical engineer to design the buildings until such time as we had approval from the board to build said buildings, because that was a use of our client's money that we didn't want to spend.
Are the pads built?
The pads are not built yet. No, no.
But the foundation for the buildings is there, as you saw the sidewalk.
Yeah, we just didn't walk down that far to see it.
Is there any way to attach those pads to the building somehow?
It could be.
I mean, I'm just wondering if they were attached to the building, then they wouldn't be separate structures.
That's, that was my, part of my point in, in asking for our engineer to look at this, to see if they could be conforming. And I, we're not gonna try to redesign his building, but on the other hand, if they were in the original plan, they, they would have been fine.
It would have been part of our greatest practical extent review.
Exactly.
So again.
But my question would be, why can't that discussion happen again?
Because it's, because you've already got the foundation in on the building.
You're not gonna, there's no moving the building to the greatest practical extent now.
Because we can't change that.
Just think if you're one of the abutters, you know, now there's gonna be all this mechanical equipment right on the property line.
Well, within the setback anyway.
Yeah.
Tim Biggi, I'm the, I'm the general contractor. Is it possible that we can put them on fiberglass pads? Something that's portable? Something that's movable?
It's still a structure. I mean, we, tents are a structure, unfortunately. I mean, you got tripped up here because you were ahead of, you didn't get it.
We could, we could move the septic back down to the front and put the equipment out in the road.
Yeah, that's, I mean, that, that's why I, that's.
Everything we've done to date has been to improve the site for the town, for the bay, for the, the community. Everything that he's done has been for.
I, I agree a hundred percent.
Improvement.
Our, our problem is, we don't have the authority to approve a structure, a new structure in a non, in, that is, that doesn't meet the setbacks. We just don't have the authority to do it. I mean, if we did, I'd be the first one to say, boy, this looks great. And it done it to the greatest practical extent. But that was the issue in the original thing. And if it had been in the original design at that point, we could have dealt with it as a, as something, you would have said, it's gotta be there, there's only one place for it on the lot. And we would have said, okay, makes sense. You've done as good a job as you can do.
So we build the building without air conditioning?
This is, you, you're trying to make it.
No, no, I'm just asking. I'm, we can put a.
I have a question. It's a follow-up. Will, so we're gonna.
You have to come up to the mic.
This isn't an amendment here. We're asking for changes and showing you the changes within the site.
And we're saying they're in the setback area.
And we're saying that this is the greatest possible extent that we can improve it at this point. And I think it's the same conversation, the same question we had last time, and we are changing our plan. And we're back in front of you saying, here's what we're doing, here's what we're trying to do, we think we're doing the best we can. What, you know, if they're not built, if we can't put them there, we will, I don't know what we'll do with them. They are attached to the building.
The greatest, just to be clear, the greatest practical extent issue comes in when you're tearing down a building and replacing it, under ten-point-three-point-two. You have to meet the setbacks to the greatest practical extent. That's passed us now. Because if, if, as I said, if the, these new structures were in the original plan, we would have dealt with it on a greatest practical extent basis. But this is a new structure. This doesn't apply to new structures. New structures have to meet the code, the setback lines.
Okay.
But that's my opinion. Other people may differ.
Yeah, no. You know, in a way, I think, I, I, I don't wanna confuse things when I'm going back to the corner market. Because they didn't have a site plan, they were able to do things that if they had had a site plan and we had had a recorded site plan, they might not have been able to do. But here, because we have a site plan, we're prohibiting them from doing something that I actually tend to agree. This is, this is not in the setback. It's, it's, it's to the greatest practical extent. I would ask if the structures could be attached to the building.
Well, they are. The air conditioning comes into the building.
They all are.
Yeah, they have to be.
Do they have to be that far out? Why not attach them directly to the building?
Well, two.
I mean, two of them are. This one and this one are right at the building with, you can see ductwork we're showing on there that goes into the building. These two are just setback mainly just to provide workspace between the equipment, so that they're not right.
What are the mechanicals? What are they like? Air conditions? Are they pump systems?
Yeah, there's compressors and there's a air handling system.
Some of those are on the roof?
There are, there are some on the roof to handle the laboratories. The big one is over there to, because we can't fit it on the roof due to its size to condition the saltwater, water-dependent laboratory in the lower level.
There's, I, I think we're into, into kind of a, an interesting distinction here. That if you, according to what Howard is saying, that if you had come back with this before you had actually poured the foundation, that we'd be able to deal with it. Because the fact that in the intervening time between twenty-twenty-three and now you've poured a foundation, all of a sudden we're in an entirely new, new situation. And I don't feel comfortable with saying, just because that foundation was poured, in the context of the full development of the plan, where what you attempted to do and done very well, in my opinion, is to make it more accessible, get the stuff that was found by the water away from it, as a continuation of that first plan. I think what you're suggesting is a reasonable.
Could you look at it, which is the way I was looking at it, in that regardless of whether the foundations are there, if you looked back at, have we moved it back to the greatest practical extent, including the utilities that we're now saying we need? If you find that we have, then we're in good shape. If you feel like we should have done something different or could have done something different, then where, then we have an issue. The foundations are gonna stay and we've gotta go back to the drawing board with utilities. But it seems, I don't see why that question can never be revisited when it's an ongoing process.
Well, that, that was exactly what I'm saying, is that this is an ongoing process on something that, that we already discussed. Is there anything further that you could do with the building? We had an extensive discussion about that. There is really nothing else that you can do in order to make that property work. So as an extension of that, I, I don't, I don't have a problem.
And if you look at the drawings carefully, I can't see any other place to put them. Because of either the slope, the parking, or the buildings are. Maybe you wanna do, you could go on the roof, but anything that's handling water, it's got to be on ground level. You're talking, wait. I wouldn't want to put it on top of the roof. You get hemmed in and we're gonna put it on all the time and hope for a legitimate space. What do you do?
This is something that the codes office deals with all the time. Property owners come in, they buy a small lot, and then they want things that are outside of what the lot can feasibly handle. And I feel like, even though this is commercial and not residential, it's similar. These are new structures in the setback. They're new non-conforming conditions. And it's not permissible in the ordinance. He cannot come in and get a building permit for a new concrete pad that's ten feet away from the property line. Can you just, there's no way to meet those standards in the shoreline zoning ordinance.
So then he's gotta go get a variance and he won't be able to get a variance?
No, he has to redesign. He could.
Can you direct me to the section that you're referring to in the shoreline zoning ordinance?
The setbacks?
Yeah. The non-conforming portion that applies to side yard setbacks.
Well, it's just the setbacks. The setback requirement from a property line is twenty-five feet.
Right. But I'm asking, where in the shoreline zoning ordinance does it reference side setbacks?
On page twenty-three.
It's twenty-three. Right. But under, for non-conforming structures.
It's not a non-conforming structure now. I mean, if it is.
It's not a non, it's a, if you put it there, it would be non-conforming. This is a new structure. We're saying, if we're putting a new concrete pad on this lot, it has to go in the building envelope.
I understand what Margaret's saying. I understand what you're saying too.
It's a new structure. It has to meet the setbacks.
Yeah, but. That doesn't match the logic that if we had had these on there originally, we would have been okay.
Yes, it's true.
And I mean, they're, they're.
No, you would have been okay if we approved it as, as part of the greatest practical extent. I mean, I think we have two choices. One, we have to say that it has to be redesigned. Or two, we have to say that, we have to make a finding that if this had been shown on the original plan, we would have deemed it the greatest practical extent.
I've got no problem with that.
I don't either.
Well, then they would have to come back for a greatest practical extent review. Cause that's not what we're talking about. We're talking about a site plan amendment. So we would be.
They would have to come back with a relocation request.
Let me ask you, as the applicant.
I agree.
Would you, would you appreciate being able to take this and go back and see if you can redesign it?
Well, that, if there's a way with different equipment or, I mean, there's not that much non-conformity. There were, how many locations were there that, the new pads?
The, well, I think there's two. No, there's one up towards the road that is a transformer.
Oh, this one?
And then the concrete pad for the dumpster. Which is up by the septic system. I feel like that one could go either way.
I mean, that's a land, both of those are, are land you didn't even have at that point.
Right. Yeah, these two are.
Right. So you couldn't have designed, you couldn't have designed those.
No, no.
But they really have to be conforming. That's, that tells the tale. I mean, how could you, they could never have given those to us.
But here's the deal. We approved a site plan that was significantly less non-conforming than the previous occupant. And now we are, in a sense, disapproving what we, what we, we're making it impossible to build what we approved because of this setback situation. Making it extreme, we're, we're making it much more difficult.
But it, it's bigger than, in, in size, right?
Yep.
So it wouldn't fit because it's bigger. We'd have to redesign it somehow.
Yeah, they'd have to redesign it.
I don't know. That's my.
There are only two pads that we can't move to get out of the setback on that side. The generator can move out of it. The transformer, transformers can move out of it. It's the two thirty-inch by ten-foot pads that we can't, we don't have the room to pull those or move those anywhere else on the site. The rest of it, we can tweak and move just enough to get them out of the setback.
So it's just those two?
It's the two, the two black ones there, the two little ones.
You can see that this one just clips it. We could slide this a little bit. This one just clips it. That can slide.
And the transformer can slide back in.
Transformer can slide back closer to the driveway.
And the generator, we can slide back in. We really don't want to, but it can slide back in.
The dumpster, we had originally had approved on, on the, the original design plan, was also non-conforming.
So we have, we have eliminated all kinds of issues with this new proposal. All right. Margaret, what do you think the solution is then? I mean, to deny the application? Is that, is that the only option that we have? Is to deny the application?
I think that they need to come back. Well, I feel like personally that they would need to come back with those structures out of the setback. Or maybe Howard's idea of revisiting this greatest practical extent, maybe there's a rationale as to why. I don't know. I just try to think of the abutter. You know, there's abutters that live right there. And, and the house got moved away and now we're saying, oh, now there's gonna be something closer again. I mean, there is an option. They've added all kinds of parking. They've added all kinds of pedestrian areas. They've added land. I'm not an engineer, but there is space on the lot to put it in the building envelope.
I, I am, I know this is really.
Can I just, can I just comment on that?
Yeah, of course. Yeah.
We are still farther away from the site line than the previous building.
Right.
We are forty-five feet lower than the previous building and we're taking up appreciably less surface area than the previous building. So it is a vast improvement over what was there. I understand the not wanting to come back. However, we are not asking to put a forty-five-foot building on the property line overhanging the water, the butter. We are asking to put a pad.
A thirty-foot pad. Two thirty-foot pads.
Thirty-inch.
Thirty-inch.
Thirty-inch by ten-foot.
Oh, ten-foot. For some reason I thought they were thirty-foot.
No, that's a, so I just, you know.
Yeah, I just feel like they're two different discussions that we're having.
And in the landscape plan, we've shown a considerable amount of buffering there that never was there because the building was on the property line. that never was there because the building was on the property line.
It feels de minimis to me. There's been a lot, a lot of discussion and.
And a lot of patient people in the audience tonight. We're not used to this big of an audience.
Okay, I just want to take a, a measure of the board, whether or not the board feels that this is, that this meets the requirements that we need to proceed with reviewing this new amendment to the, the biggest plan. Lori?
I think this is a de minimis change. I think we're splitting hairs and making them unnecessary.
I agree with Lori.
I would agree. Christine.
I don't really have an opinion. I'm sorry, I might have.
I disagree, but.
We have a disagreement. All right.
But you have, you ought to go through the approval conditions.
Let's go through. Thank you for your patience. We are just really trying to do our job. Okay. So, I will move that the planning board does not require a peer review in accordance with Section 13.4.2 of the Site Plan Review Ordinance that use any 25 application of JBLLC and therefore the applicant is not required to pay a technical review fee. Second, any discussion? Any more discussion? All those in favor? All those opposed? Thank you, Howard. That's the first time you've.
A long time.
Okay, submission requirements. So, applications for site plan review have to be submitted on forms that the code office, planning board, planning office apply. The applicant addressed all the submission requirements in their April application dated May 15th, 2025, and no waivers were requested. So I move that the planning board finds the application of JBLLC conforms to the submission requirements of Section 14 of Site Plan Review Ordinance. Is there a second? Second, by Lori. Any discussion? All those in favor? Thank you. Three, two, one. Or are you going to abstain?
I will, no, I'll vote.
Okay.
The ones that are, yeah, that's fine. I agree with that.
So, now we move on to those things that are not applicable. And we're going to just take a look at standards that are not applicable to the application, then we'll look at standards that are. So I will move that the planning board finds that the following standards in Section 15 are met based on the finding that the standards were met in the 2023 site plan approval and no changes are proposed. 15.2, 15.3, 15.4, 15.5, 15.11, 15.13, 15.17, 15.18, 15.19, 15.21, and 15.22. Motion has been made. Is there a second?
No second.
Thank you. Christine, any discussion? All those in favor? This is partly why I think they are de minimis changes, is because we're not asking for more information based on the 2023 application, the site plan approval, which I think adds to our. All right, now we're going to look at standards that are applicable to the application. I will move that the planning board finds that the application of JBLLC meets the approval standards of Section 15 of the Site Plan Review Ordinance based on the following findings that are incorporated into this motion by reference. Dimensional requirements, 15.1.
Do you want to strike the second half of that?
Yes.
Well. I think we need to take a vote separately on that.
Okay. All right, shall we take a separate vote on dimensional requirements?
Yeah, and I would just note that the first sentence of 15.1, which is an approval standard that is applicable, says the plan for development must, must meet the dimensional requirements of the basic land use ordinance or the Shorelands ordinance, zoning ordinance pertaining to lot area setbacks, blah, et cetera. It has to meet the setback requirement. And you're saying, you're going to vote in favor of that, saying it does meet the setback requirement?
We are going to, I think what we're doing is.
Because it's de minimis? I don't know. I can't vote for that, unfortunately.
We just moved that following standards were met based on the finding that the 2023 site plan approval.
No, no, this is 15.1. Now, that's not up there.
No, I, I understand that. But we just, we just made a, voted to approve, we just voted and agreed that certain standards are not applicable based on the 2023 plan.
Okay.
So, to me, that is, that says this is a, what we're doing is amending a 2023 plan.
We're past that. We're, you just moved that the, below that, the standards that are applicable. This is applicable, 15. We already agreed that.
But we've said that other standards are not applicable based on the 2023 plan. Now we're going to look at standards that are applicable.
Because the 2023 plan has changed. That's what they're coming here for.
Yeah, okay. I get, I don't understand what you're saying. I do.
It's complicated.
It is complicated.
So do you want to separate that out?
I just asked that we have a separate vote on 15.1.
Okay, 15.1. We will have a separate vote on 15.1. All those in favor of 15.1 striking the language at the bottom that says the standard is not met, I'm, I'll make a motion that we, wait a minute. Do you want to make a motion?
No, I don't.
I don't think you want me to make a motion.
I'm sorry. It's almost, it's almost time.
The issue is whether, whether the.
What we want to do.
Board finds that the application meets the.
That's what we want to do.
Meets the finding.
Okay, can we do this at the end?
Sure.
Let's do this at the end. Okay, we're going to do this at the end. All right, so we'll separate 15.1 out to the end. 15.6, internal vehicular circulation. 15.7, parking. 15.7.2, layout and design. 15.8, pedestrian, oh, I'm sorry. Margaret, you've got a note here.
Oh, which one?
15.7.2.
Yeah, I don't really think it's a huge deal. It was just something I wanted to bring to the board's attention.
Okay.
They just expanded, they made that curve more gentle to get down into the site, but in doing that, they just made more area, because it says that you have to be, parking spaces, access, drives, and impervious surfaces must be located at least 20 feet from any side or rear lot line. They expanded that, the driveway along the side, the sideline. I don't think it's really that big of a deal, yeah, right there. Yeah. It's just a standard I wanted to bring to the board's attention. I.
Well, do they meet the standard or they don't meet the standard?
I think they meet the standard because this is existing and it goes along that lot line. See?
Yeah, this was existing, but this was.
But, so it has that such a sharp curve. What they did was they, they made it more gentle to get, make it easier to go. Their issue was at the top, the, like the hump.
Okay.
It meets the standard?
I think it meets the standard.
Okay, that's all, you're testifying that it meets the standard.
Yes, all right.
15.8, pedestrian circulation. 15.9, stormwater management. 15.10, erosion control. 15.12, subsurface waste disposal. 15.14, natural feature buffering. 15.15, lighting. 15.16, water quality. 15.2, floodplain management, and now we get to.
Well, take your vote on that.
Now we take a vote. Now we take a vote. So. It's been moved and seconded.
Who seconded it? Who was the second?
Christine, did you second?
Yeah, I did. Oh, sorry.
Moved and seconded that the planning board finds that the application of JBLLC conforms to the submission requirements of Section 14 based on the Site Plan Review Ordinance. It's been moved and seconded. Any more discussion? All those in favor? Okay, thank you. All those opposed? Thank you. All right. And now, in clear law, so in light of the findings, of fact, with consideration given to the supporting documents and the record.
Shouldn't we do, shouldn't we do 15.1 first?
That's what we just did, didn't we?
No, we took that one out.
That's for sure. I thought that was the 15.1 vote.
No, 15.1, we haven't, we need to do it now.
Yeah.
So, so the motion is all of those things except for 15.1.
Right. So we're good to go.
No, you got to vote on 15.1.
Okay.
Okay, well, since Howard changed his vote. So would you, a motion to reconsider that, that prior motion, which is everything except for 15.1, so that Howard's vote can be accurately counted?
Is that a motion?
Yes.
Second. All right, any discussion? All those in favor?
Howard? So that one's unanimous, okay?
Yeah.
That one's unanimous.
Now go back to 15.1.
Now we go back to dimensional requirements.
I, I vote that we hear from the code officer. I know you guys don't want any more discussion, sorry. Can we hear from Tim on it?
It's on the setback issue.
The setback.
What's, what's a direct question?
Do you feel like this application meets the dimensional requirements?
I do. I think it's fine. 30 square feet, if we can, okay, and 80 square feet if the signs aren't up there. Why can't we, and this is, could be, this is hard, could be argued, if it's part of the utility, it is part of the building, and it's less than 80. And if we're, I don't hear. Side walk on the other side, it's in there. Over here, than there is over here. So I'm confused.
Okay. Thank you. Thank you very much. What I'm hearing is that the code officer is in agreement that it is not an issue. Okay, now, I have to remember where we were. 50.
You have to vote.
You have to vote on 50.
15.1.
So, we've separated 15.1 out, and now we're going to vote on 15.1. The plan for development must, the standard of 15.1 is met based on the following. The additional land will make the property conforming in regards to lot area and impermeable surface coverage, and there will be no change in the structural height or frontage develop dimensional requirements.
That's it. Not the last.
That is, that is in motion?
I'll second that.
Seconded. Any discussion? All those in favor? Thank you. All right. Oh, thank you for.
Okay, now go for it.
We need two minds on this.
You wore me out, guys.
Now we are on conclusions of law. In light of these findings of fact with consideration given to the supporting documentation in the record, including the 2023 site plan approval, I move that the planning board reaches the following conclusions. The planning board finds that the application of JBLLC to amend an approved site plan has met the standards of Site Plan Review Ordinance. The planning board approves the application with the following conditions of approval. The approval is not final until such time as final plans showing all conditions of approval, and any waivers granted has been signed by the chair of the planning board. The approval is based on the approved plans and on all submissions and information provided by the applicant at final approval, whether referenced in any findings or any conditions of approval. This approval is dependent upon and limited to the proposal and plans that contain any application and supporting documents submitted and affirmed to by the applicant. Any variation from the plan, proposals, and supporting documents, except de minimis changes as determined by the town planner that do not affect approval standards is subject to the review and approval of the planning board prior to implementation. Four, the applicant shall obtain all necessary state and federal approvals before the applicant commences any land use activity pursuant to this site plan approval and shall comply with the requirements of those permits and approvals. Five, all work shall be completed in accordance with best management practices for soil erosion and sedimentation control. Six, the applicant will control vehicular parking on the lot, which shall be limited to seven designated parking spaces. The demand for additional vehicular parking shall be accommodated off-site at Cohog Bay Conservancy property or other lot controlled by the applicant. Seven, the applicant will provide an updated stormwater management system plan to the town within seven days of approval, which will be shared, within seven days of approval.
Wait, what about the end of that?
Which will be shared with the engineer who is contracted with the code enforcement office to inspect the stormwater management system installation. That's a separate review. Okay, good. Thank you. Do I have a second? Lori, a second. Any discussion? All those in favor? Thank you. Thank you, Howard. Are you in favor or?
No.
I'll oppose. Okay. I know how you feel. I did that once myself.
No, I, I mean, it's just a, just my personal opinion, that's all.
I, I get it. No, it's your professional too, but.
Yeah.
I get it. Okay, I'm going to ask that we take a little bit of a break here, like five, five, five or 10 minutes?
Can we take a five-minute break?
Five minutes? Just five minutes. Just five minutes.
Thanks, guys. Bye.
Thank you.
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 Excuse me, sir. I talked to Margaret and she said she was going to try to blow that up for you guys.
I did. They got it.
Okay.
Yeah.
I just didn't thought it would be picking up.
Well, it doesn't have any, it just has the surveyors marks on it. It doesn't have the building dimensions. I mean, it just doesn't comply with what we asked for in the.
I think all the dimensions and everything were written down on one of the questions. I wrote down all the dimensions of the buildings. Forty-five by fourteen, half passes, twenty by twenty, a house is forty-five by thirty. Do you believe?
Well, can you show me that so I can pick which one? Some page thirty-one of the submission stuff.
Thirty-one of what?
Of sixty-two. I'm looking online.
We don't have any numbered pages.
Oh, yeah, they're right over, yeah, here.
Is it this one, Dan?
Yeah.
Howard?
Okay.
It's this one.
Send me the one all the way to the right.
You flip through the pages, yeah, that's it.
Yes.
This. Which I can't read.
I can't.
I can't read it.
Sorry.
That's okay, I got it, yeah.
I, I can't read this. I appreciate the effort, but I ca- it's, it's not really readable.
What about the driveway? Ian, I know there's a driveway because I, I was on it. How do you get to the driveway, Ian?
How do I?
What's the dimensions? What, what's the parking? Those would be normally what we'd see in a site plan.
You come off of Route twenty-four into my yard, or they use Echo Shore Drive. They're not really parking for a long period of time. They're only there for like five minutes. It's basically a gravel driveway. It's not like I can really design a parking lot on gravel kind of, I don't know. I do have a, a pad, a hut top pad out in front of the building that's approximately ten, ten by fifteen maybe, or twelve by?
All right, I'm gonna, I just want to go back to something that I said in the beginning of this meeting, which has probably been forgotten, given the length of the last two applications. What the planning board needs is a drawing that is accurately drawn with, in terms of Section fourteen and other sections as well, which is a boundary survey, location of sewers. We understand that there's no sewers on this property, but the locations, names, and present widths of existing public or private roads and rights of ways, the location and dimensions of all existing structures on the site, and this has to be on one map that's easy to read, that's at a, a good scale. All the intersection roads, and you can consult with the codes office about this, and I just want to finish here. This is a really tough one for people that, like yourself, who are business owners but aren't used to dealing with planning board requirements. What you need to run your business is really different than what we need in order to approve your application. And what we need to approve your application with is kind of, not exactly, but it's something akin to what we just saw the, the applicant do, where he had everything drawn on the map, it was easy to read, you could go back through time and say, yes, this is here and that's there, and then that, that gets recorded. And we can't record what has been, what has been given here in terms of a site plan.
Well, all, it's all been engineered, all the lot lines are there. It isn't like I'm
I understand.
A huge place. It's only got three buildings on it.
I know, I know.
Both of them are small. I mean, you want me to draw it out by hand or, or whatever, but, I mean, how can I go by the width of the road when they're all gravel?
It would be the same.
It's not like they're hut top.
It would be the same thing that we did for the corner market. We had the same discussion with them, and they got a Google map with the dimensions, and Margaret helped them out, and they drew it based on that Google map.
That's not true, they hired a surveyor.
Did they hire a surveyor? Okay, but originally we said.
We talked about doing it.
We talked about doing it.
Because you can pull that information and measure it right off of it.
Right.
So, let, let's just take an example of what the, of what I think the issue is. In our parking space requirements, there, we have to figure out which category it's gonna go in. And the two that are most applicable are retail and commercial sales, and industrial, public utilities, warehouse and storage facilities, truck facility. I don't know if it really qualifies there. I think it's more of a commercial sales building. He takes in product and he ships it out, he, or takes it out, puts it in his refrigerator, takes it out. It requires parking for one space for a hundred and eighty square feet of leasable floor area, which in this case is, if the building is, what did you say, fourteen by thirty?
I do believe that.
So.
Forty-five by fourteen.
I think sales implies that you're selling something.
Well, he is. He's selling clams, but he doesn't, he doesn't sell it there. He sells it somewhere else.
That makes it more like a wholesale.
Yeah, but I think sales implies that there's customers coming in.
I don't know.
In, in my opinion. None of, I don't think any of the.
What we're asked to do is pick the most applicable.
No. We've had ones before like Lobster Lane where we said there's none of these that are applicable.
So what would you say is the planning, what does the planner think is the parking requirement?
I think that we can go, I don't think there is a parking requirement, as noted. I think that the, it's up to the discretion of the board to determine what's adequate parking, because there is no standard for this. Which we've run, we've.
There's no parking spaces that are shown on that plan.
It's dirt, right.
So you don't need.
So I spoke to the harbor master, Paul Plummer, who used to be the municipal shellfish warden for the town of Brunswick. I think that was his title, I don't know, but he said that he used to, because a lot of Brunswick harvesters used to sell here, he used to hang out in this parking lot, and he said they used to go up Echoes, across the top of First, down the parking lot and park all the way towards twenty-four, and they would stack up as needed. So when somebody was done, they would just pull right out.
So basically coming in this way?
Right, so they just, it was just one way and they would stack up in that.
Well, that's, that's actually a really good point, because we don't have anything in these submission requirements that shows the neighborhood with all the roads and where the parking might be on those roads. Some of those are private roads, some of those are public roads. We've heard that the private road isn't in great shape.
Is that a private road?
I don't, I don't know.
It says it's a town.
We're not gonna be parking, these people are gonna be coming through like an ATM machine or a bank on a Friday afternoon, except they get paid every day. They'll be coming in, dropping off their product and leaving. They're talking five to ten minutes max, because, you know, they're getting out of work. They want to be out of there just as quickly as possible.
Yeah.
And so it's not like they're gonna be parking and hanging out. It's not a restaurant. People park.
Yeah.
They're just coming and going. And as far as, these people are claiming this isn't a state road, I'm old enough to remember when it was the main road before they built that bridge. And so that road is why it's called First Road, is because it's First Road.
Well, wait a minute, we're, we're getting, we're getting way off, because I think, I think the question, the threshold question that we have is, no, would you let me finish, please?
Yeah, and then you can talk.
The threshold question is this. Does the plan that we have in front of us show all the information that we need in order to adequately review the request? And one of the things that that requires is to have dimensions of buildings, it has to show if there's gonna be parking, where's the parking? And what's the size of the lot? If it's a matter of traffic flow, what is the traffic flow? What's the size of the road? How does that do? And we have none of that. And that's the problem that we, that we have, and once we have something like that in front of us, then a lot of the questions that some of the abutters have had can be addressed by referencing that specific plan.
What you just said about Paul is the way it always was, they come in Echo Way, come around the loop.
But we have, we have nothing.
We discussed this today, getting, so maybe some videos.
Okay.
But we'll probably do the same thing this gentleman did.
Okay.
Okay, so, yeah, so, you know, once, once we have something that we can look at, and then we can point to it and say, does this accurately show the traffic flow or not? Does this show the, the parking or not? And then have a discussion, and that's one of those times in which if there are issues, there are some issues which are apparent at the beginning, which can be resolved if we take a look at the plan. And, and take a look at the plan and say, well, maybe if you move the parking here, if you move the traffic flow a different way, we can resolve a lot of issues that we just don't have, we don't have anything that we can point to to do that.
I understand that, we discussed that today, because no visual.
Yeah, yeah.
Like this, you know, this guy's poster, whatever you wanna call it, shows us what we need to do.
Yeah.
Is that, no, I'm, I'm just speaking for myself here.
Well, my, my sense is that there's two aspects of this. And, and unfortunately, when we meet with business people, they don't, people don't understand this. But the first thing is, how do you get in the door necessarily? You get in the door to the planning board by meeting the requirements of Section fourteen, all of the requirements. So you go through each of these sections in fourteen, point one, point two, and point three, and you say, I've given them all of that in a drawing or otherwise, that information, or you ask us to waive something.
We have to.
That gets us to the hearing. Okay, the hearing then says, we have to say and vote that all of the approval standards in Section fifteen have been met. And there, it goes on for pages. It's not just parking. You know, dimensional requirements, utilization of the site, access to the site, internal vehicular circulation. Do you have a right to those, to use those roads? Are they public roads? Or you have an easement to use? Does the public have an easement to use First Street and Echo Shore's Road? I don't know that, but you might.
I did ask that question, and he, and they did confirm that they had a right.
Well, it doesn't show up on the plan. It just shows, this, it may be that this is, I haven't seen any plans. This is a surveyor's plan. If there's a plan recorded in the, if it's a public road, the, the city should know that, the town would know that. I don't believe either Echo Shore's Road or First Road are public roads. It's not being maintained by the town.
No.
If they're not public roads, they have to be shown on a plat somewhere in the registry of deeds.
If you Google them, you will find it.
Okay.
But they blocked it off when Tommy Coffin died, to keep people from coming through there, because who wants a bunch of people coming through your door?
All right, I'm gonna stop, I'm gonna just stop this for a second, because.
Thank you, because that's what we need to do.
Thank you.
Like make a graph up.
Yeah, I wanna, I wanna make certain that, that, that you understand that our job is to, because there's never been a site plan here.
We have to do it now.
Was it supposed to be one when my father bought it and rebuilt it?
Yes, there was supposed to have been a site plan done when that building was built.
Well, I did, I wasn't a part of that, so.
Yeah, that's why I said in the very beginning, it's not.
The town would've gave him a business thing if there wasn't a site plan done.
Well, that was then, this is now.
No, I understand that, but I'm saying.
But, but in any event.
It might have.
Eight years has passed since the building was used. There isn't, it's well beyond any grandfathering provision. This is basically, we have to look at this as if it was a brand-new business.
I understand that, sir.
And because of that, we have to make sure that all of the approval standards are met, and there's pages of them, unfortunately.
That's correct.
And, and we do that for everybody the same way. It's not that we're picking on you.
No, but with this site, I didn't think that it would be applicable that I had to actually design the parking areas. Dimension of the private or such roads, and if they are private, which I lived, and I sense in that area I have the right to use it. Who maintains it?
But you do have to answer those questions and many more in order to get across the threshold, as Howard said, for us to even review, it's, and what we're reviewing is what you submit. We're not reviewing your business or whether.
No, I understand that, ma'am.
It just gives us the information, and then that information goes on record. Part of the problem, if your dad had gone through site plan review, it might have been a lot easier for you, but be that as it may, we are starting from square one. And you can work with codes, and you can work with planning, and they can help you to develop a, a package that will get you through to, to.
Oh, I can, I can get that done, ma'am, that's not a problem.
Okay, that's what we're, that's what we would like to see.
If you need more information on that subject, I can get that.
That's what we would like to see, the whole site plan review ordinance taken a look at, and an application that conforms to the site plan review ordinance. So you have to take a look at the whole thing, and whatever is submitted has to be in conformance with that, or you can request waivers. But those waivers have to be justified. Yeah, yeah.
No, I'd rather just get, get that done.
Okay.
On, on that section.
Okay, all right, so where I think we are tonight, sir, is that I'm going to withdraw my, my motion regarding your application meeting submission requirements. I'm going to withdraw that motion. You don't have to do anything but withdraw it.
You have to, the second has to withdraw it as well.
Will you with?
I second it and I withdraw it.
Okay, thank you.
I think, I think this.
Those are four points.
Listen to the public, they, they come out.
Yeah.
Not those people that are in favor or not in favor, and at least, so everybody hears it.
And gets on the record.
And then we should table this to a state cert.
And that's what we'll do. So we will end up tabling it, but we're gonna hear from the public who sat through hours.
So if I get this done before the next meeting that you have, we'll be able to go over that?
Well, you can speak with the planner about what's on the docket and, and what the schedule is.
Well, we should be able to hear it next month.
Okay.
Sure.
Hopefully, if you get it in, in the submission requirement.
It's a real big deal, ma'am.
If you get it in the day before our meeting, we will not be able to hear it.
No, I understand.
We have to get it in, in, in the time.
Yeah.
Okay, is there anyone that wishes to speak from the public? Thank you.
And Howard, thank you, those were good points.
I did find an email that I got from John Engelhardt. He says, I live at twenty-eight Harpsell Island Road. I have no issues with Jeff reopening his business. I'm traveling to Alaska, so I can't be there to voice my support of him. The clam business was open when we moved there and was not a problem. I feel that you can manage all the concerns that other neighbors have voiced. Thank you, John Engelhardt.
Okay.
That wasn't made public on our website, because I just got it yesterday, but there was an email on our website that was available from the public, from Elaine Downs and William Paul. So, that one, you guys can read yourself on the website.
Thank you, thank you, all right. Come on up and. Yep, please come up and state your name and.
I'm Hartford, nine First Road, and since you're tabling this portion of it, it's probably not worth discussing right of ways or the history of the neighborhood at this point? Or are you?
We're happy to hear, to hear something, if you could keep it brief, and then you put your comments in writing.
To whom?
To, to the planning board. If you, if you want to, you can put them in writing.
Okay. Well, I mean, the right-of-way First Road, it's, it's a, it's private. It's not a town road. It never was the road to Bailey Island. It used to be Fire Road Ten before we had to name the roads. And the reason that you can't, from Jeff's land, you can't go north towards Brunswick, is that the road has eroded and washed out, so it's unsafe to go down. And I'm not even sure that he has the right to go that way. So I just wanted to make sure that the portion of Echo, of First Road that he's talking about using is from his driveway out to Echo Shore Road.
Thank you.
He's not moving north at all.
Okay, thank you, and that illustrates why we need a complete site plan, because I have no idea where you're talking about. I mean, I have some general idea, but we have no information that we can look at that actually shows what you're talking about on the face of the earth.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Can I say something real quick?
Yes.
I did talk to Tom, and he, I know his concerns, and I told him that if there was ever an issue, he could talk to me and we could resolve that out. But I don't think any of the diggers have gone down that road for a long time. I haven't really ever gone down that road. But like I said, I told all my neighbors that I'm willing to work anything out to make them happy, the best that I can.
Thank you.
I am restricted on some things, what I can do and what I can't do. I've been there, I've been trying to fix the property up. I plan on moving in full-time. I've always gone back and forth. And whatever the planning board needs, or whatever my neighbors need, I'll do what I can.
Okay, thank you. Any other member of the public wish to speak?
I, I mean, I just, I. I, I just want to first express that I don't want to be an adversarial neighbor.
My, sir, Elaine Downs, hi. Okay, so we bought Jeff's, one of his properties, his, his yellow cottage, and.
And everybody here got a copy of your email that you.
Yeah, I don't even remember what I wrote. I, but it was a while ago, so I'd have to look at it again, but. But I have concerns that I think I want to address as a, maybe just on behalf of everyone, because there are people here who are, for whatever reason, they're not saying anything. And they're on Echo Shore Road. For example, April Purinton, she has a cottage on that property. And the concern is also, she not only has her cottage, she has a shed that's behind that. So when these clambers are gonna be driving in, they're gonna be going right past her cottage, they're gonna be curving around an extremely tight curve right in front of her shed, essentially, potentially going on her property to get back to First Road to get to Jeff's driveway. And I don't, I mean, I think that someone needs to really visualize what we're talking about in terms of space, because it's very tight. And the other concern is that we're talking about Route twenty-four, which yay, it's thirty-five miles per hour, but it's really not thirty-five miles per hour. So we're talking about vehicles that could be potentially lining up on Route twenty-four to get in, to drop, to sell their clams. And it's just, it's a very dangerous area through there, because people are not, they're not adhering to the speed limit. So there, I think there's a lot, there are a lot of concerns. We're in a different world now.
Yeah.
We're in a much faster world, and this was, again, something that was in place and was working, maybe it was working fine. I, I don't think there were any issues with your father. There were a few times when the clambers sped out and screeched their tires or whatever. But I think we're really in a different world now, and I think that that needs to be factored in. We're talking about a major road, and we're talking about traffic. Actually, I wanted to reach out to Ron Panzioni, because I wanted to ask him, okay, because he did a traffic study, and the traffic has increased significantly throughout the year. So we're not only talking about, we're talking about a business that existed, but now we have to say, okay, that business existed then, but how is that business gonna function within our current environment? Which is a lot different now, when there, when we're talking about a road that has heavy usage throughout the year, Route twenty-four.
The, the applicant did reach out to the DOT for a driveway entrance permit, but I don't know that you've heard back from them.
I haven't received anything.
It takes them a little while, but I did have him reach out because it is a change of use.
Yep, okay.
And the other concerns I have for the people, again, we're not on Echo Shore, we're on Purinton Drive next door. But I also have the concern about emergency vehicles getting in there. I have a concern about, just in general, people not being able to get into their driveways, because they're blocked by clambers waiting to in-line, and I, I, those are the concerns. And the other concern we talked about, Jeff, was we talked, you talked about your hours of operation. And you had said that you wouldn't have, it would be like a normal, normal hours, even, you wouldn't have clambers coming in like at night, for example. I think you, we talked about that. Because we were.
In the summer, it stays lighter.
Yeah, I mean, just a concern about a business operating and any levels of noise or whatever, but, but again, I guess my primary concern is overall safety, and I really feel that you're talking about exiting boats with trucks with boats, getting out onto a main road, and cars coming at, above the speed limit. You're talking about quite a bit of activity. I mean, it's already been an issue at the Gurnett Trading that they've had. It's, it's, it's difficult when cars are getting, going in and out of there all the time.
Thank you, thank you. I would just note that this is a commercial fisheries two zone, and so that's what we have, and.
I just wanted to.
Yeah. Yeah, okay.
Yeah, I'm a clam digger for thirty-four years, member of the shellfish committee.
Yep.
Robert Boyce, Jr., I live at Oars Island, so I don't live in that area, but this is a fishing community. Harpsell invests hundreds of thousands of dollars a year in the shellfish program, and we, diggers really need this. I hope you take that into consideration.
Thank you, thank you. I just want to say for, from the boards, I'm, I'm sorry.
No, I was just gonna say, yeah, we, we try to be very professional to the fishing and things like that. We're always considering that, we're always thinking about that. We used to have somebody on the planning committee that was a lobster man, but now he's a selectman, so he was a great addition, because I would always go to him and ask kind of questions like that, so we understand.
We do.
Getting to a point about people going around Echo Shore Drive on the First Road. There's only one other person that I know that lives beyond Echo Shore Drive that uses that, and that is this gentleman over here.
Speak for myself, thank you.
Okay?
Okay.
Okay. I don't think there's many cars that go around there at all besides the clam diggers, besides myself. We only buy clams approximately between three and four hours after low water. That's pretty much four hours of operation. That's it.
Okay, that can all go in the application. Really appreciate that. That's good information for the application. Thank you. And we're not arguing the pros and cons. We really just want to hear. Then we're going to probably table this application and, and get on with our, our other business.
Hi.
Hi.
Tom Noche.
Yes.
I live on First Road. I'm the largest abutter, the closest abutter. And since First Road's washed out, I do have to go out through Echo Shore. If this comes to fruition, this becomes a, a hazard for emergency vehicles, for me to get in and out to my own home. And also the hours of operation, this isn't, you know, we aren't talking fifty years ago. This is a real dense residential area. And I want to see nine to five. If he, if he's gonna get a permit, let him operate in normal business hours, nine to five. I don't want people coming there at nine o'clock at night with clams. He's really close to me. He's just put a compressor in within fifty feet of my, seventy feet of my bedroom window. And left the trash on my property.
No, I didn't.
So I don't think this is a real wise decision to let this go forward. I mean, it was, it maybe had a time when it worked, but given the traffic situation, as other people pointed out, it's a hazard. And, and the houses that he's trying to occupy are probably hazards. They sat open, doors open for two years with who knows what running in and out of, molding.
Okay, thank you, thank you very much.
Okay.
Just would, just would remind you, it's a, it's a commercial fisheries two zone, it's an allowed use in that zone, and it's been there for a long time, so.
And there's no, but there's nothing going on in that zone.
Okay, thank you, sir. Thank you.
Can I raise another point?
One more, and then we're, we're gonna cut it off.
I have a conclusion when she's done.
No, I, what I want to say is, it just comes to mind, the people on Echo Shore is, is a private road, is that correct?
It's not, it's not owned by the town.
Okay, so let's ask the question, that we're talking about people living on that road, we're talking about maintenance of that road. Who is gonna be responsible for maintenance of the road if it's getting commercial traffic?
That's up to the residents of the road. We have no control over that.
Well, how can they, but if, if they're. Well, how can they, but if, if there have limited usage, if they have limited usage compared to the commercial usage, how does that work? I mean, normally you have to have an association.
Yes.
Or something like that.
We don't, the town does not get involved in the workings of privately-owned roads.
Yeah.
We often get asked to, but we don't get involved.
I think that's a valid question, though, also.
All right, thank you very much.
I just want to end this by saying, the town of Harpswell, um, in twenty-twenty-four signed in the right-to-fish policy endorsed by all three selectmen. This is just introduction paragraph. But it says Harpswell's a working waterfront community. Commercial fishing, lobstering, shellfish harvesting, and processing, boat building, and repair service, and similar marine-related activities are the core of what Harpswell is and should remain. These right-to-fish policies serve as a guide for the town and to the Harpswell community in protecting the working waterfront and commercial fishing from potential nuisance complaints by aiming to prevent contention in commercial fishing zones and other areas of the community, and limiting restrictions that have the potential to adversely impact commercial fishing and marine business. And I think that that is an important thing for everybody in this area, in this commercial fishing zone, to really understand that that is what has been endorsed by the selectmen, and that is a policy that they want us to follow. But now you have to table it?
Um, let's see. So I move that we table this application and that we, uh, offer the applicant the use of the town planner and the codes office in terms of receiving guidance about how to put together an application that can be brought and considered complete by the planning board and reviewed thoroughly by the planning staff. And we'll bring it forward as soon as you get the information and the application is complete.
And I might also add that once that information is submitted, that will also be on the website. So you will have, you will have access before the next public hearing to take a look at actually what was submitted. So if you have additional questions, you're basing that off the most recent information that we have as well.
Motion is on the table.
I'll second it now.
So we have a second? Any discussion?
No.
No? All those in favor? Thank you. All right. I believe this meeting is adjourned. Thank you for waiting so long.